Okay, everyone, we're getting ready to start the meeting.
Commissioner James.
Okay. Skip seven point two. Three point two. All right, we're skipping three point two. Okay, everybody, we can make it to our seats finalize our conversations.
Yeah, I'm about to.
All right, we're gonna begin the meeting. Welcome to the city of Dana Beach. This is the regular meeting on Tuesday, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, seven P M. Can everybody please bow their head for a moment of silence? Thank you very much, stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A deputy clerk, can I please have a roll call?
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Llewellyn.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner Salvino.
Here.
City manager Garcia.
Here.
City attorney Boozes.
Here.
Thank you very much. All right, for item three point one, we're in presentation, special event approvals. We have a presentation of the community shuttle service comprehensive operational analysis by Public Services and the Coradino Group.
Can you hear me? Public Services Fernando Rodriguez for the services, happy valent, thanks to all of you. And I wanted to just welcome our residents watching on TV and here present with us today. The study presentation you're about to see is really the result of your approving, the commission's approval of this study being conducted by the Coradino Group a little bit over a year ago. So you will see these as the study unfolded, how it was performed and the results. Just some introductory comments, the community shuttle service has been around for almost decade. It's bonded by the half penny tax from the county. It's operated and managed by the city in conjunction with the contractor who runs the buses, who actually drives the buses. So this service hasn't been changed much in the past several years and it's two routes, a western and east route. And you get more information throughout the study presentation, but I want to just comment that the ridership has been a little bit low. It ranges from below average to average and we like to make that on a higher ridership to provide the residents of the city and the visitors with the best service possible. So to that end, the study assesses the operation and service. And the study also is looking or looked at ways to make the service better and increase ridership. So without any further ado, I'm going to introduce Mark Alvarez, the analyst that performed the comprehensive operations analysis, thank you.
Thank you Fernando, good evening, I'm Mark Alvarez with the Coradino Group, happy to be here. We have been studying the, we've done the COA, we started it actually during COVID and we had to extend it because of that, we had much lower ridership. So this is the result of the entire study with the extensions. Next, next slide please. So the reason we do this, as Fernando started to talk about, one, we do want to improve the performance of the service, but we also look very, we focus on improving the utility of it, the service of it to the residents. But also Dana Beach has the good fortune to have a number of destinations that are, we also want to serve those destinations, whether it's Hard Rock, the beaches, the Dana Point, Oakwood, you have a Tri-Rail station, you have it all and it's not quite connected. And that's one of the things we looked at very heavily. We also looked at improving the physical infrastructure, so it's not just buses, there's also the stops as well. And then, of course, we also look at the connectivity to Broward County Transit and to Tri-Rail itself and anything in the future. And we also look at first last mile connectivity, if there are shared bikes and so forth. Next slide please. So we have objectives also that we have to meet for Broward County Transit funding. And that's something else that really motivates what we do in the study and what we do for the recommendations. As Fernando mentioned, the buses right now, both the east and west route are in the tier three. We're not kind of lower on the range, about somewhere in the lower, the bottom quartile of Broward County Transit Services for these types of shuttles. When we started the study, the west route was actually sub, was underperforming even tier three, it was around six and a half rides per hour. Whereas the east route was doing a little better in the seven to eight range, close to eight. We do, we do, of course, have to look for community support, that's a requirement of Broward County Transit. Throughout the study, we've tried, we've started to do that and then we, they have criteria for route frequency, you know, the time between arrivals of the bus. They look at transit connections, how often we train, we have a stop that is shared with the Broward County Transit System and how many other shuttles or Tri-Rail that we connect to, so we try to improve that. And then, of course, this general transit supportive characteristics, look at the land use, et cetera. Next slide please. So when we started the study, a few months later, we started a survey of riders. Originally, we were going to do onboard surveys, the ridership was very affected by the COVID pandemic, so we shifted to a survey monkey. And we, we surveyed, we had a branch on the survey for both riders and non-riders. So while everybody was home, they had some time to do their surveys and we had pretty good results. So we have two distinct slides in this, one is for those who ride the bus already and one is for preferences of those who don't ride the bus right now. The shuttle, I should say. So of the riders that are on the shuttle, we found that there's really no daily riders. It's basically all trips for shop, mostly trips for shopping and discretionary uses. And everybody walks to the bus, nobody takes a bicycle or scooter or a car or anything else. Everybody walks, about a third of them less than five minutes and two thirds of them more than five minutes a walk. The service preferences are not unusual for this type of service, most people want on-time arrivals, they want clean buses, they want route information at the stops, they want more frequent service and they, the smartphone app, we were surprised that this came in the top five, but it was in the top five. So even elderly riders are starting to know that they need more information about these services. And then for new destinations, we asked five different destinations and the top two were the Fort Lauderdale beaches and the Antiques District. Next slide please. For the people who don't ride, one of the first questions we asked is, are you aware that the system exists? Because actually the survey was acting as a promotional type of an item, so people would understand that there's a shuttle. And we found out that it's a fairly transparent system and that's one of its problems. Transparent meaning invisible in a way. Forty-eight percent didn't even know that the shuttle exists and of those who knew it existed, most of them were unaware of the actual route or the stops. So basically, the awareness in the community was extremely low that a shuttle even was operating from Dana Beach. If, in the question where if they would ride the bus, most of them again pick discretionary trips. Very few would use it for work or, or daily type of purposes. Their preferences were not tremendously different. They would look for on-time arrivals, they would look for cleanliness of the bus, good route information at stops, smartphone app. So again, it's the same, same grouping there of preferences that people would want to ride the bus, these are non-riders, people don't know it. And for new destinations, and there was on the survey a map and it explained where the stops went to, where the routes went to. The top two locations now were actually the airport and downtown Fort Lauderdale beaches. So it was a little bit switched around, but those would be the two top locations. Next slide please. So we, we have ridership data, daily ridership data by stop for almost three years. And that was really because we had to extend the study because of the pandemic. Takeaways, there are takeaways. First of all, the green route or the west route, as it's called, one that runs from City Hall more or less west out to Hard Rock. That was the poorest performing route, that was around six point six riders per hour. That not only rebounded after the pandemic, but it's now become your better route. It's actually doing more ridership than the east route. Next slide please. And the east route, the ridership fell during the pandemic and it has not really recovered. And it's now the lower of the two routes as far as ridership, so they sort of switched their priorities around. If we go to the next slide please, we go to the next slide, we start to see why. So we also looked at the same data and pulled out the most popular stops. There are about fifty, fifty-five stops altogether and we ranked them on, in terms of the actual ons and offs over those three years of data. And you can see the red dots, it's Hard Rock, it's the Publix on Sheridan, it's, it's actually, Tri-Rail is one of them, Oakwood. All these places are the highest ridership and eight out of those ten are serviced by the green route. The blue route is servicing mostly residential population, but it's lost its destinations because its most popular ones were the Publix on Sheridan, which is still there, but also the, where the Walmart was and is not there, it services that shopping center. So it's lost some of its destinations, it also lost the Wind Dixie that was also on Sheridan, if I recall. So, so the, the blue and the green route are now turned around and we understand what the current ridership is doing, they're mostly making shopping trips, non-discretionary trips. So look, next slide please. So one of the, the main aspects of looking at this, at this analysis is to look at all the new destinations that have come online, it's Dana Point. Are we servicing all the employment centers, do we service Hyalaya, do we provide services to the Spirit offices, to Dakota, to, well, we already go to Tri-Rail, we hit all of these major destinations, because there are really two potential markets. One for employers and tourists or visitors, I should say, and the other for the residents. And that's how, as the COA went along, we decided to split the routes differently. Instead of a geographic split of an east route and a west route, both of which overlap heavily through Oakland, through Oakland Plaza and downtown area around the City Hall, there's a lot of overlap on those routes. So we decided a better way to do this would be provide, to provide for the residents first and allow them to get everywhere without a transfer. And then have another route that would provide for, because it's different characteristics, the residents don't mind being on the bus for a long time, they just want to have, you know, they don't want to wait, wait for a long time, they don't want that security of being on the street for a long time. Insecurity, I'm sorry. The, the other route really would have to be faster because it might be employees, might be people who are on a clock, who are on a schedule. So that was the initial concept of long-range set of recommendations, but we would need more buses to do it. So for the initial, next slide please. For the initial implementation of this, the first restructuring is to take the east and west and combine them. So that now we provide a better service to the residents by allowing them to go everywhere. So anyone from the east side of, of Dana Beach, from the apartments and so forth, on, on Third Avenue and so forth, can go all the way to Hard Rock, can go all the way to any place they want to go without transferring the bus. And the transfer is the major impediment for people wanting to ride a bus. Secondly, so, so this is basically, it's a loop alignment. What we, what we sacrifice is we have a little more time between the buses, a little more headway, as we call it. Right now, the east route is fifty-seven minutes, the west route is an hour and fifteen minutes. The two of them together with two buses, it's like a loop one way and a loop the other way, so one bus one way, the other, the other. It goes up to just under ninety, like eighty-seven minutes. That's, that's our negative, the positive is we provide much more connectivity without anyone having to transfer. And that's something that people want more. We also shift the geographic center a little bit, before it was a little lopsided, we get rid of all of the overlap on Oakland Plaza, all of the overlap around City Hall. The next slide please. So along with this, we noticed some other things during the survey, we realized that we have a, what is essentially an invisible route. And we've, there have been some changes to make this a little better during the time of the study. One of the things is to make, we don't have adequate signage on the bus stops at all. So the first step on this is to actually have, you know, it seems so obvious, but to have a sign that says the Dana Beach Community Shuttle, Shuttle is branded, it has a branding and a logo that looks like the logo that will be on the bus. I mean, we, of course, that will increase awareness and it should increase ridership as well. Next slide please. Publicity and passenger information. So again, along the same lines as the stops, we, we really are recommending a full wrap on the bus, not just a little sticker. I think when we started the program, there was basically just a paper sign on the window of the bus and a sign on the top. We have some logos on it now, but you need, you need to have a much stronger identification of the bus. And you see, there's, you know, I don't like to show other cities, but it works, that's Sunny Isles Beach and their buses are very noticeable, they're in the colors of Sunny Isles Beach, the blue and yellow one. And they're very obvious and different from anything else that's on the street. The other thing is the apps. Having an app that a person can look at on their phone and know when the bus is coming has a huge effect on their perception of how long they wait. Because now, of course, if you're in your home, you see it's maybe running late, I'm going to go downstairs five minutes from now and then I'll only wait five minutes. It changes the perception entirely. And of course, it, the app itself is its own advertisement as well for the system. Next slide please. And finally, it's not on, on the vehicles right now, but safety and security, having cameras on the bus, outside the bus is, is absolutely essential in this day and age. It lowers the problems with incidents, I think it actually has an impact on insurance. The drivers feel more protected when something happens, there's full clarity about what happened, whose fault it was and so forth. Passengers feel much better when they're on a bus that has some security surveillance. So next slide please. So those are the basic recommendations, there are more detailed ones or small refinements on the route, going to like Sportsman Plaza, taking a diversion through Dana Point and so forth, but that's the essential big pieces of it. So we will be going to Broward County Transit with Fernando and your staff to get this approved and I welcome your questions.
Commissioner James.
Thank you, thank you so much for, for, for that. Who burdens the cost for these upgrades, is that, would that be Broward County or would that be us?
That would be Broward, that's what we're applying for, for the next fiscal year with Broward County.
Okay, and with your analysis, I, I think with those, the two loops that you have going opposite directions, it adds almost what, double the, double the time, correct?
Uh, no.
It goes from fifty to ninety, you said?
The, the east route right now is at a fifty-seven minute time between buses and the west route is a hundred and fifty, an hour and fifteen minutes between buses. And doing the loop with two buses right now in opposite directions would be for, for waiting in one direction, right? You might see the other one pass by in the other direction, but it'll be an eighty-seven minutes. So it'll be a little less than an hour and a half.
Do you think that that would decrease the ridership if people be, you know, more rides frequently? If we want to increase, you know, ridership, do you think that's going to be a hurdle for us to get through?
There are, there are sort of, it's a balance. So it's typically one with, we think that that decreases ridership in general. It will also hurt us on points for Broward County. However, we know that particularly with the community shuttles and especially when we do have a live schedule on an app, that that's less important than people transferring. A transfer between two buses is, is like death to ridership. Nobody wants to transfer between buses because they have to go to a stop, wait there, they're not sure when it's coming and so forth. So it's a, it's a sacrifice of one for the other. We would need three buses to improve that and that's where the funding will go in the future years.
Yeah, that's, that, that would have been my next question was, is there an opportunity to also ask them for a third bus? So we can try and decrease that, those wait times.
Yes, that, that's the concept. So the long range of this would be to, to solidify the residential ridership and serve the entire city very well. And then as we build on that ridership, then ask for more funding for a third bus, possibly a fourth bus where we construct the employee and tourist destination route as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Mark, I wanted to clarify a couple of things, the wrap around the bus, the graphic has been approved by the county, but they want to now put a seal, the little logo of the Broward County Transit, and they were going to work around that logo and do the wrap that they liked, they approved, that Katia worked on and it was very beautiful wrap around the bus, so we're very close to getting the bus wrapped. That would be at our cost, the wrap. I want to make sure that I answer your question. But it's going to make a big difference when you see that bus coming down the road, it's going to be orderly expensive, but it will make a difference in the look of the bus. Now, the phone app, we're not even, not very close to doing that, we're working on finding a vendor. We don't know what the cost would be and I'm working with the county to see, the county might cover that, but I'm not sure that they will. So I'm trying to address your, your, your questions. The wrap has been approved, it looks beautiful.
And I wanted to add through, through the mayor, when we knew that we were not happy with the product and we had, and we had discussed that. We were hit with, with COVID, so we needed to do the study throughout COVID. But now moving forward, as you all are also discussing how we market and how we promote the city, the wrap and, and, and the presence and the ridership is our goal, then moving on to possibly add more, more buses or even look at a trolley. But bringing the sexiness back to transit is our goal and the ridership as well.
Vice Mayor Wong.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if on that wrapper or somewhere on the bus itself, could there, is there like a QR code or something that people can go to that'll take them to the, the actual schedule?
We can do that, we will have that added to it, yes.
Because those are very effective.
Exactly.
So somebody sees it, now at least they know that it's there.
Yep.
But then if they don't know where to go, they'll look for it.
We will add that to, this, this is flexible, but the wrap itself, the concept is really going to be an eye catcher. And, and that, and that app, that phone app is going to make a big difference.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
No, I was gonna bring up the QR code thing, so, but I also, I, I'm a visual person, so when you tell me the wrap has been, you know, on the bus, it's been approved, we haven't seen it, like, how, how is this going through? Because I, I would love to, you know, I mean, that we have, you know, that we're able to see these things.
It was very difficult to get, I, the county is very picky about the graphics, but I was, we were able to get a version that has our city colors, is eye-catching, so definitely will be shared through the manager.
Especially, especially when, when Broward adds their piece and we can bring it back to the final.
We will, okay, for sure, certainly.
Okay, so it's just still in the process.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, essentially approved but not approved finally, yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Oh, one sec, Commissioner James.
That, that was my question for us to be able to see it, because I know we're also talking about how we're doing advertising in the city. And I didn't know if it could be consistent with what we are doing or even if that would have come out of our funds for a way that we wanted to, to take part in advertising. But it's gonna come out your budget, right Fernando?
Yes.
You already took it.
I have to say, I have to say yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, for our next presentation, we have human resources, Get Fit Dana Beach, our employee wellness event that we had last month.
Good evening, Mayor Commission. Lyndon Anne here and we're so happy to be able to give you a very brief presentation about our employee wellness fair. We're gonna have a very short video for you in just a few minutes. The wellness fair is designed to be there for employees as a preemptive measure so they can focus on their health and wellbeing. It also helps us focus on our health insurance rates. Healthy employees can certainly be better for all of our health insurance, it's just a win-win for the city, for employees. And we're excited to be able to show you this video. Anne?
And the feedback from the employees who are so happy, we have to share, the video is just to highlight the event. So play the video please, thank you.
Oh, and we want to definitely thank Public Services and Parks, our, our, all of our human resources team and the support of our city administration, our city manager and deputy city manager for helping us make this happen.
Hey, hello world. What a day. Look at all the blue skies. Breathe it in with new eyes. Again, happy days. Warmth of the rays on my face. Hear the children's laughter. It's forever after. I get happy day. Take my hand, come on with me and whistle a tune. Smell the flowers. It's a jolly time. Yeah, we're leaving cares behind. Get happy, get happy, I get happy day. Everything is going our way. Up above, feel the love, even clouds are shining. See the silver linings. I get happy day. Yeah, we're leaving cares behind. Get happy, get happy, I get happy day. Golden sunshine smiles as we play. Get happy, get happy, I get happy day. Everything is going our way. Through the day, all the sunbeams are glowing kisses. I can see that this is a good happy day. I get happy day. I get happy day. I get happy day. Get happy, get happy, I get happy day. Golden sunshine smiles as we play. Get happy, get happy, I get happy day. Everything is going our way. Get happy, 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 get happy.
Thank you. And very special thank you to Katia for the video. We loved it.
Thank you, Lyndon Anne. Thank you, HR, for that. And thank you, Katia, for the video. All right, for item 3.4, we have Storm Protection Program by Frank Tapalo, our CFO, and Eleanor Norena, our Director of Community Development.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight to talk about the new Storm Protection Program, which is a part of our ARPA funding that we received from the federal government. And I have here with my sidekick in action, Corinne LaJoy from Community Development. I'm just to give you a, an update on the ARPA. We received sixteen point two million dollars. Last year, the city administration and all the department directors got together and programmed out the use of those funds. So it's a very sort of all encompassing spending of the funding that really touches every area of the city. Between parks and rec and public safety and administration. And this is one that actually gives funding directly to residents of the city. And many of those who are most in need. So I think it's a really great program. I'm very excited about it. There's not a whole lot of things we do in finance where we get to actually get involved with giving directly to the community. So. This program is, next slide, please. Part of the ARPA funds can be used for assistance to property owners. And in this case, this program is going to be used for home mitigation. And home mitigation is strengthening the home against potentially damaging winds. So, next slide, please. All those improvements like you would do, impact windows, hurricane shutters, a new roof, new impact door openings. Hurricane straps for your roof, secondary water barrier. So there's, there's a lot of really important home hardening, home safety, home protection, things that can be done here with this funding. And everything will be done, would be permitted. It would be done up to Florida Building Code and Hurricane Codes. And of course, with manufacturer specifications for those products that are being installed. Next slide. So the goals of the program are pretty obvious, but really what we have is, is we're going to be creating a more resilient residential infrastructure. We're going to be investing directly into the community and then providing insurance savings to Dania Beach property owners. So for those of you who are homeowners and you've ever had to do a windstorm mitigation inspection on your home. And then you give that to your insurance company and then you can get credits towards your policy premium based on the, the amount of protection that you have installed. So not only will it be directly, you know, reinforcing the homes and making them safer, but people can actually save money if they don't already have those sort of enhancements on their home. Next slide. Eligibility is, there's two ways to become eligible for these funds. One being if you live anywhere in the city and you're at or below three hundred percent of the federal poverty level. This is federal money, so there are requirements and restrictions about how we disperse it. So we have to be sure that people qualify either based on income. The other way to qualify is if they live in what's called a qualified census tract. And I'm going to show you a map in a moment that, that will.
What is that?
It's like somebody's joining the meeting. So I'm going to show you what the qualified census tract is. We have one in Dania Beach. And typically the, the people that live in a qualified census tract already meet a certain below median income level threshold. So, so there, there are definitely people that, that need the funding to do these sorts of things. And then, like I said, if you don't live in the qualified census tract, then you have to be at or below three hundred percent of the federal poverty level. And that little table to the right shows you where that is. So for example, for a family of four, it's a little small. The three hundred percent threshold is eighty-three thousand dollars. The grant program is for a total of fifteen thousand dollars in improvements. It's going to be a five thousand, up to a five thousand dollar match to receive up to ten thousand dollars from the city. So it's a two to one. So their total improvements are only ten thousand dollars. Then they would put in twenty-five hundred, the city could put in. They would put in three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three and the city would put in six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven. So if there's, there's ways to get that funding waived. So if they're at or below a hundred and eighty-five percent of the poverty level. Then they wouldn't have to contribute the five thousand dollar match. The city would cover the full fifteen thousand dollars. So understanding that this is an area of the city, the qualified census tract where people may be at a lower income level. They may not be able to contribute that five thousand dollars. So therefore, if they're under that threshold of a hundred and eighty-five percent, then they could get a waiver of that five thousand dollar match. The other way to get a waiver of the match is if, if you're participating in the state of Florida's My Florida Safe Home Program, which is almost identical to what we're doing. And you've already applied for that. They also require a five thousand dollar match and they're getting ten thousand dollars from the state. So if they qualified already for that program, then we could allow them to participate in our program and be entitled to the full fifteen thousand towards their improvements. It wouldn't be paying them for things that they're already getting reimbursed for. It would be for other things that maybe the state funding wouldn't cover additional improvements that they wanted to do, but maybe they didn't have the money to do them. And next slide, please. This is the map of the qualified census tract. That's not the full map of the city, but the black outline. This is more of the eastern portion, east of nine ninety-five. And the black outline is the city limit. And then the orange area is the qualified census tract. And what that really means is at least fifty percent of the households have an income of less than sixty percent of the area median gross income. So it's a little bit different from, we talked about federal poverty level before. There's two different measurements here. Qualified census tract has its own requirement, but if you live outside of that orange area, you could qualify based on the other income, the federal poverty level, three hundred percent guideline. But if you live in the, in the QCT, it doesn't matter what your income is. So there's no income restriction or qualification if you're in that zone. So just keep that in mind. Next slide. So the other thing I wanted to mention was in, in looking at that map, that map, I, I'm pretty sure that orange QCT area is, resides a hundred percent within the CRA district. I know you heard about the CRA mentioned as Storm Protection Program earlier tonight. This program would be effective citywide and it would also encompass the CRA. So the program eligibility for the home itself must have no outstanding code violations or liens of any kind. You must be current on your homeowner's insurance, if it's required. You must have flood insurance if it's required. And you must be up to date with your mortgage unless you own it outright. And you can't be in foreclosure or have any other claims against the property. And we're going to be setting up a fully online application process, a hundred percent electronic. And it's going to be through a secure portal that we're going to bolt into our city website. So we're going to have an assistant session where people can come and ask questions and understand how the program works. And then we're also going to set up people at City Hall to do intake and help people with their applications and make sure that they can get them done. We really have to streamline and make this one, sort of a one size fits all way to get into the program because we, we just need everything focused into one area. Instead of having some people applying on paper and some people applying online, it becomes very difficult to administer. So we want to make this simple for the people and we'll make this simple for us to administer and get the funds out as quickly as possible. Next slide. So in order to effectively do this, because we're getting the federal money, we have to go through a competitive selection of contractors. What the city is going to be doing is we're going to issue an RFQ. We're going to select a pool of qualified contractors who will participate in this program. We will have that list available. They're going to be agreeing to comply with all the terms of the program. So they have to understand how the milestone payments are going to be made and they have to be agreeing to that upfront that they're going to play ball and they're going to, they're going to work with us on that. The good thing for them is they're going to get almost like guaranteed business out of it. So they, the list of contracts will be provided to applicants once they're approved. They can choose whoever they want from that list to get quote. They can get one quote or they can get three quotes. There's no requirement on the number of quotes because we're pre-qualifying all the vendors ahead of time. And like I mentioned before, if they're in the My Florida Safe Home Program, they have their own list of pool contractors. We would allow those to qualify for our program even if they weren't done through our RFQ because they already went through a competitive selection with the state of Florida. Next slide. It's a pretty straightforward process. The first thing they do is they go online and apply. Once they receive an approval from the city, they'll solicit their quotes from the qualified contractors. Quotes have to obviously contain all the, the important information and most importantly, the, the total cost of the work. And we're, we're going to be verifying the quote to making sure that they, they seem reasonable and they make sense given the amount of work that's being done. So once they select a contractor of, of, you know, their favorite one that they liked out of that pool, then they'll let us know. And, and then we'll go ahead and allow them to proceed. If they don't qualify for a waiver of that five thousand dollar match, they would have to provide that five thousand dollars upfront as a deposit to the contractor so we can get started. Virtually no contractors out there are going to go out and start ordering materials and start a job without receiving some earnest money upfront. Next slide. And this is pretty much the end of the presentation. This is a generic kind of timeline. We're hoping to start marketing this program in March. Start the qualification of contractors in March as well. And really the goal being that we want to kick this off towards the end of March and then start reviewing, scoring and making funny determinations through the beginning of May. And then we can make all of our awards on June first and let everybody know, hey, you can go ahead and get started. And then it would take about six, seven months until we get the program completed hopefully by December thirty-first. So we have five hundred thousand dollars allocated of the ARPA money towards this program. At the fifteen thousand or ten thousand dollar level, we're talking about thirty, thirty-five homes in the city that could improve. You know, get some really nice improvements done for, for a little out of pocket money. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Commissioner James?
Thank you, Frank, for this. This is a little exciting for me to see this coming to fruition. I, I have one question. Are the only, only homes can participate in this? I, I guess my question is, I know that we have the Legion Hall, we have two Legion Halls. I know one of them for sure needs some work done. They don't have the funding to be able to do it. They have some issues with their roof. I know they fall under the qualified census tract or whatever it's called. What is, what opportunity is there for those, for our veterans?
It depends on who, really who owns the property because it has to do with the income. So if it's owned by an organization that wouldn't really fall within the criteria of the program and the federal guidelines that require that, they meet certain income thresholds. I know that if it's in the qualified census tract, it could be anybody who lives in there, doesn't matter about their income. But what we've been told is that it's, it's a residential program, so it has to apply towards residential properties. We can look at other programs with our ARPA money that we, we have some other funding set aside for business assistance that could be programmed out for other things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, thank you for the presentation, Frank. I always had some concern or questions about the marketing plan. It seems that sometimes we get these programs and they're great, but you know, they're, it's there in the forest and nobody hears about them. They don't really get out to the people who would be eligible to apply to them. And so I, I really hoping that we have a robust plan to get that information out to, to the residents other than just our social media platforms.
Yeah, we, we haven't planned that side of it yet, but I know we'll work with the city manager's office, we'll work with the public information officer. And we're going to use all avenues we have to reach as many people as possible, including, like I mentioned, having public information sessions. That we can notice those to the community either through social media, email, through our website, through everything that, you know, we can make a video and put it out there and encourage people to come and get the information. And we, we're going to do everything we can to get the word out.
And I think videos, excuse me, I think videos with you all, you guys are like the face of our city. We can use code, code red. But I think that we could work collectively with you guys, get the word out.
Absolutely. And then just consider talking to the Broward County Housing Authority because they have a lot of different avenues where they were able to reach a lot more people as well. I attended a different session with them over the weekend and they just have different ways to get information out to, to different people. So just consider that. That was just my, my biggest concern about this. But congratulations. Thank you. This is a great program if we can really get the residents involved in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Vice Mayor Lam?
Thank you. I think it's a great program. I'm glad to see that we're doing this. It's, it's definitely going to help a lot of people. I know that, and I don't, I'm not quite trying to say this, but I know that there are some, some issues with homes that maybe are rented. So obviously you're going to be looking at qualifications of the homeowner, not the renter?
Correct. We, I failed to mention that. We have no issue with homes that are not owner occupied. As long as they're either in the QCT or the owner meets that income threshold. We are open to residential units, residential buildings up to four units. So multifamily, if there's duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, those are all also eligible for these improvements.
And in the QCT, it doesn't matter what the income requirements are?
Correct.
Okay. That's better. Okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Frank.
You're welcome.
Great, great presentation. Hopefully it gets utilized.
Thank you.
Okay, for three point five, we have a special event request from the Marine Industry Association. This is a parks and recreation item.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner, we've gone through this application. All the departments are in support and we ask for your support as well.
Do you have a consensus on that? Go ahead.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second? We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed?
Thank you.
All right, for section four of the meeting, we're going to do proclamations. And I have a proclamation here for American Heart Month. So this proclamation comes from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas American Heart Month was established by President Lyndon Johnson under Presidential Proclamation Thirty-five sixty-six, December nineteen sixty-three. Ten days after Congress issued a joint resolution requesting the president to issue an annual proclamation. And whereas heart disease occurs when the arteries leading to the heart become clogged. Although heart disease has been around for thousands of years, we do know that many aspects of modern life exacerbate risk factors and make people more prone to heart disease and heart failure. And whereas heart disease is the leading cause of death for men, women, and people of most racial and ethnic groups in the United States. About six hundred ninety-seven thousand people in the United States died from heart disease in twenty twenty. That's one in every five deaths. And whereas heart disease affects all ages, genders and ethnicities, risk factors include. risk factors include high cholesterol, high blood pressure, smoking, diabetes, and excessive alcohol use. And whereas 83% of Americans believe that heart attacks can be prevented but aren't motivated to do anything, while 72% of Americans don't consider themselves at risk for heart disease and 58% put no effort into improving their heart health. And whereas the good news is in most cases, heart disease is preventable when people adapt a healthy lifestyle, which includes not smoking, maintaining a healthy weight, controlling blood sugar and cholesterol, treating high blood pressure, getting at least 150 minutes of moderate intensity physical activity a week, and getting regular checkups. And whereas American Heart Month is observed to raise awareness to the importance of healthy heart and to encourage healthy habits that help reduce the risk of heart disease. Warning signs for heart disease have been known to appear when people are as young as 18 years old. Red flags such as high blood pressure should be taken seriously, and healthy habits should be adopted like getting 30 minutes of exercise every day and talking with your doctor to develop healthy eating habits and promote heart health. Now, therefore, on behalf of the city of Dana Beach, I, Archibald John Ryan, the fourth mayor of the city of Dana Beach, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2023 as American Heart Month in the city of Dana Beach, Florida, and do encourage our residents on this Valentine's Day to take care of their hearts. Dates on this 14th day of February 2023. All right. Now for citizens' comments, we have Mr. David Kaplan. If you please come up, state your name and address, sir.
My name is David Kaplan, 111 Southeast 3rd Avenue. I gave you some packages there, some photos I'd like you to look at. I go through this, there are a few issues that I cannot get answered from the city on. I had to file a public information request to find out how the city's drainage pump works in Meadow Brook Lakes. I have included a copy of my public information request on the back of the handout. I believe you'll see that I had requested plans in numerous ways there. I have always offered to pay for any copies. I spent $25 on these copies for you tonight. I'm giving you a copy of the email chain to your deputy so you can see the difficulties I encountered in trying to get the answers to my request. But it is not my intention to throw anybody under the bus here. The city has a lot of good people working for it, and you need to know how they respond to the public. In the photos provided, the first page there shows you a flashing red light on the city's stormwater drainage pump in Meadow Brook Lakes condominium. Public services didn't answer my question that this light flashing is a pump failure. This one pump handles stormwater from Federal Highway East to Southeast 5th Avenue where it discharges 219.6 acres drained into the wetlands there. This led to my public information request that was only partially fulfilled. The city did replace fascia boards on the pump house for me, and I thank you. I have been told that there's a backflow preventer being considered, but could get no official response for this. This backflow preventer would stop stormwater, saltwater, from going back into the lakes that we were trying to drain. The next pictures are a sidewalk that was replaced by the city. I asked the question, who's responsible for backfilling new sidewalks that the city puts in our location? Last year, they replaced sidewalks on Southeast 3rd Avenue, and it was not backfilled. I asked who is responsible. Our condo insurance is going through the roof. I understand it was replaced by the city because of an insurance claim slipping fall, and we had to pay for it. They put it in, and I asked who's supposed to backfill it. After I did make that inquiry, the ideal market backfilled some of their sidewalk, but now it's washing away. Again, I don't know who's supposed to backfill your new sidewalk you put in. The other pictures I have there are some coax cable and phone line that's hanging from the poles there on Southeast 3rd, Northeast 1st, and the alley behind the dentist office on Dixie Highway. There's 150 feet of telephone wire that's hanging in the parking lot right across from the post office here. Who can we get to clean this up? There's broken sidewalks from utility trucks on Southeast 3rd Avenue and Southeast 5th Avenue. They come in to do the repairs, they drive over the sidewalk, and you're going to come back after us again to pay for new sidewalk. Somebody needs to be watching this. One of the last things I'd like to ask for is porta potties for the transit homeless. I know I've already had
Sir, your time.
The city go out and clean some of the human waste around the city. We need to do something for the homeless. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kaplan. I appreciate the work that you presented to us. Appreciate your presentation. It'll be taken care of by the proper staff. Thank you. All right, up next, we have public safety reports. We'll start with Captain Danny Marks.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. We received a recent complaint about speeding on Southeast 5th Avenue. We immediately deployed our message board, speed tracker, and began some speeding enforcement there at different hours and times. We also put down our traffic analyzer, speed sensors, that give us a very, very detailed report. We usually do it a week or two weeks at a time, but it prints out northbound and southbound reports about how many vehicles travel. At the next meeting, I'll come back with the results of that study because it's quite interesting. And just let me remind everybody, if and when we do catch you speeding on Southeast 5th Ave., you will get a citation. I'm happy to say our, I spoke about the social worker and the new deputy that we're getting. It's not a new deputy, but a deputy with the social worker. They began today, and first thing this morning, they were also, they already provided mental health services to somebody on the street. So I'm going to come back with, I'm sure, a bunch more great success stories from this program. Deputy Spicers and Hatfield have been out there. After several months, they are finalizing permanent housing for one of our chronic homeless females. They responded to a citizen concern of homeless loitering on our private property at 47 Southwest 15th Street. They coordinated with code enforcement to cite the property due to debris and in addition to obtaining trespass signs, affidavits, and had the property owner erect a fence on the vacant lot, which is always a plus. They coordinated with code enforcement to revisit the property of Southwest 4th Ave. and Dixie Highway to remove debris and clear brush to deter subjects from loitering. Code enforcement was notified of an encampment located on a vacant lot at 1031 Southwest 12th Ave. And efforts are now being made to remove the debris and contact the property owner. Our nightly contacts are being forwarded to the daytime outreach unit for case management, and now it's a lot easier with the social worker deputy, the additional personnel on shift. They were able to secure a Greyhound ticket for a subject that was from Alabama, and he was reunited with his family. Today, our day shift roll call was held at Chesterburg Park, and it was in the morning, and yesterday morning, we trespassed three subjects from there, and they were sleeping. But they were trespassed from the property prior. So at roll call this morning, they took a trip to jail. Our neighborhood support team is working on, with Parks and Rec, on another fishing excursion during the spring break camp. I'll obviously give everyone the information as it gets closer and we get a date and a location. We're thinking IT Parker because the fishing's pretty decent over there on the backside. I spoke about getting quotes for a citywide LPR program. I'm still working on those quotes, and I'll present them to the city manager once I receive all our options. In my opinion, that's the best technology there is for not only deterrent crime but catching criminals, getting guns off the street, getting drugs, and making quality arrests. Our crime suppression team executed a narcotic search warrant as a result of a suspect who was selling crack cocaine out of an address on Southwest 8th Ave., and we did recover crack cocaine and a firearm. I'm going to go over two cases real quick, very they were great, they were just amazing arrests. And this first one, it's a shame it happened. Some of the calls, we hate going to, are sexual battery calls. We received a call of a woman screaming in a backyard. Several deputies arrived, and she was being sexually battered and being whipped with a handgun in the head. Absolutely disgusting. The deputies immediately ripped the suspect off the victim and ended up fighting with him for a little while. We don't know what kind of drugs he was on, but he was on something. He hit two of our deputies. We ended up taking him to the hospital for treatment, and he was arrested for aggravated sexual battery, aggravated battery with a deadly weapon, armed false imprisonment, grand theft of a firearm because the firearm he was beating the victim with was stolen from a crime in Cooper City, possession of a firearm by a convicted felon, and resisting with violence and violation of probation. So we got him off the street. I'm sure he'll be going away for quite some time now. Those types of calls, a deputy or law enforcement officer might go their whole career without arresting somebody for that in progress. So we're lucky, we got the call number one, and we got there in time to save the victim and arrest the suspect. We usually get those calls delayed because victims are afraid to report them or they're embarrassed, something along that line. The day after that, Sergeant Zeller was getting off on midnight shift, and one of our LPRs went off, our license plate readers. It was for a vehicle and a suspect that were wanted from an attempted homicide in Pembroke Park from the day before. The suspect shot the victim 20 times. So all our deputies were going, running around like crazy, looking for this vehicle. Well, Hollywood finds it at the 2500 block of Sterling. So we get briefed by them on where the vehicle is. We set up surveillance, we call in additional resources because we don't want to miss this opportunity to catch this suspect and get the vehicle. So we contacted our violent crimes unit. They confirmed that that was the vehicle and the subject they're looking for. We called in our Viper unit, which goes after all the violent offenders. And we set up on the vehicle, conducted surveillance, had the helicopter up. The Viper unit caught the vehicle in motion, conducted what's called a vet, and they disabled the vehicle, if you will, and took the suspect into custody. He had two firearms on him, AK-47 pistol and another handgun, which we believe is one of the ones used in the crime from Pembroke Park. We're presenting the case federally due to the offender's violent history, and he's looking at minimum mandatory 30 years. Lastly, I spoke to our Colonel who assured me that we will be getting our deputies ASAP, and I will keep everybody posted on that date that we'll start receiving them. That completes my report.
Thank you, Captain Marks. Commissioner James?
Yes, thank you. You said, when you guys went to Chesterburg, people were sleeping. Were they homeless or were they? I guess I want to know what's the difference in someone being homeless at our park? Because I know we have a lot of homeless at like Frost Park. I got a lot of phone calls even leading up to the motorcycle show that, you know, we have homeless that are there. So what is the difference?
Well, we don't classify people as, if they're breaking the law, they're breaking the law. So if there's an ordinance violation or they've been trespassed or they've been warned about a certain ordinance or law that they're breaking, we'll enforce it.
So in our parks, I'm asking, if they're sleeping at the parks, is that that's breaking the ordinance, correct?
Yes, it would be lodging in the open.
Okay, I don't want anyone arrested at Frost Park, that's not what I'm saying, but have we utilized our homeless outreach to our parks? Because I know there are a few people that sleep at some of our parks.
Absolutely. Yes, we have, and we continue to do so. Some of these shelters that we have are filled to capacity. And is it against the law? Yes, if they're sleeping in the open, if it's an ordinance that's on the books or state law. But the last thing we want to do, if they're wanting services, there's just not shelters open, we do our best to secure them a room or do our best to transport them to a shelter, whether it be in Pompano or Hollywood or anywhere really. But we try not to arrest somebody that's sleeping unless they've been warned or trespassed or they're causing an issue. We will continue to enforce it. And obviously, if they're unwilling to accept services and they're breaking the law, they're going to go to jail.
Okay, thank you.
Regardless of who they are.
Thank you, Captain Marks.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. All right, up next, we have our Fire Chief Sergio Pelissero.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and the great citizens of Dana Beach. I want to start by saying that currently our extrication equipment, as you know, is a draw to life. It's currently a thorough inspection. All our cutters, spreaders, and rams underwent their yearly inspection, so they're ready to go. Also, our lappers and hose went through pretty rough testing. We tested the hoses at over 200 PSI, which, you know, means pretty heavy pressure for over, you know, two to 10 minutes to make sure that we don't have any issues and that they're ready to be deployed whenever we have an emergency. The windows at our fire station one finally passed inspection, so that part of the process is complete. The station hardening process is complete, and we'll move on to our generators and then our roof and our doors very soon. Our education department has been busy at our station. We have parents, new parents come to our station, and we'll go through a class with them on how to put their car seats in, put it in, put it out. They're very, you know, they find it easy for them to do themselves. So we'll sit there and teach them how to do it properly. And lastly, for the month of January, our fire station units at Station 1 and 17, they were dispatched to 721 calls. Our EMS runs totaled 651 calls. Now, the major call, or the biggest areas where we had called were 79 sick person calls, 56 fall injuries, and 55 medical service calls. Now, when you think about those calls, the way they come in and the way they're dispatched, a sick person, we really don't know what we're coming into. We really don't know if a hip, if a fall injury could be somebody that just tripped and fell, somebody slipped and broke their hip, you know, fire or medical call, we don't know what we're coming. So what we do at the fire station, like I talked about it last year, we come up with crazy scenarios. Okay, this is going to happen, and we train with each other and we put each other under like scrutiny and, you know, come up with different scenarios of like, what if this would happen? What if that would happen? And we do that basically every day. We do it at, you know, after we check out our fire trucks in the morning, or we'll sit there in the back of the rescue truck, or we'll sit there at the back of the fire engine and just put ourselves through those calls during lunchtime. We just, you know, always training, being mentally prepared for any of these calls because, like I said, you don't know what you're going to get until you get there. Our fire calls were 70 calls, of which we had two major fires during last month. So our crews did a great job. We were able to, you know, keep anybody from being injured on the fire ground, the civilians, and also our firefighters. So with that, if you have any questions?
Vice Mayor Loewen?
I just wanted to say thank you to you and your team. We had a call the other night. We had a call out there, and you guys got there really fast and took care of the situation very quickly, did a nice job. So, and the person ended up in the hospital needing additional medical care, but you all did a great job. Your team did a great job and handled it very professionally and very, very quickly, so.
Thank you very much. I'll let them know. Have a good night.
Thank you, Chief. Keep doing a good job. Stay on top of the training. I like it. Okay, for item seven, is there anything that we wish to pull from the consent agenda?
Just 7.7 is withdrawn.
Oh, 7.7 is withdrawn. That makes a difference. Okay, Commissioner James?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. It was on 7.7, but I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Consent agenda is passed. Any opposed, none opposed, consent agenda is passed. Okay, no discussion and possible action. We'll move on to Commissioner comments and we'll start with Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I just am gonna go over my events um because I had so many, but there were, it's just been a crazy, crazy um past two weeks. But I will just highlight a couple of the ones that um really stood out. But I want to say thank you to the Reach program and what they're doing over there at Olson Middle. I thought it's really phenomenal for kids to be able to come and present in front of the commission, similar to Love Our Nation. And I just want to see us encourage more kids to be able to come, do public speaking, and to be able to really express themselves. Because I think these are a life learning, real world learning experiences that will stay with them for a long time. So thank you. And Mayor, that was very cool for you letting them come up here and get behind the desk. That that's something that will stay with them, that's very, very cool. Um we did also attend the Property Force ribbon cutting in the Dakota Centers. Um that is a wonderful uh program or business uh that that really helps people in need. So you hear Property Force, you don't really know what it's about, but I encourage people to look it up if they are having issues with their homes. Um let's see, the, again, I want to thank Linda and the entire staff or Human Resources for the Get Fit Dania Beach. That was an amazing, amazing event for all the employees. Um it was one of three events that I had to go to that day, but they just did a phenomenal job. Uh the first event was the uh Six Chamber Event at the Dania Improv. And I do, I I know the manager's in talks with the Dania Beach Chamber and in Hollywood. Um there were six different chambers and over my professional career, I have been a part of four of those chambers. The chambers are intricate or they're very integral to having successful businesses in our city. So I really want to figure out the chamber situation because um the entire improv was completely packed. There was no standing room because businesses do support each other and we don't want to be missed out on the loop of somehow figuring out the chamber situation. So uh that was an amazing event. Uh also, huge was the Ignite. I went to the VIP reception for Ignite Broward. As you know, Ignite or Mad Arts is right here uh in Dania Beach. Mark Appicin is on the Public Art Advisory Board. Um and the kickoff event was at the Mads Museum of Discovery and Science. There were thousands of people there. Um I know our community development team was there, I was there. Uh but we need to have more representation from our city because these are events that highlight our city and it's just great for us to be able to show up, uh especially when these events are so huge. They were marketed all throughout Broward, Boynton Beach, um all over. And I would think we should look at, you know, if if a business, if it's a business in our city, then we should look at partnering with them and helping them to be promoted as well when they have these kinds of events. Also went to the actual kickoff event where it was in Dania Beach, where it was at the Mad Arts um building right here in our city. Thousands, the lines were wrapped around the entire building. So the Ignite Show is something that we definitely, I think, should have more support from for the city in the future. Um what else? We went to, I went to, we went to Commissioner, I mean Vice Mayor Llewellyn and I went to the NPO Awards and uh that was phenomenal. We had bird's eye view of of everything, they took care of us at Memorial. Um congratulations to Gail Bolton and Beverly and Lavoyd Williams and George Pratt Platt. Um just great, great people doing great things with the NPO and it was good that we had a presence there as well. Um finally, the topping out party for Griffin Living was amazing. And um I'm just glad, again, the Reach kids are out there and congratulations to uh to Koush and everyone for um bringing such an amazing, unique development to our city. And lastly, tally, 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 tally was so much fun. Um it was a lot of work, we ran around uh from here to there, to and fro. Uh but we did get to meet a lot of people from both sides. We got to meet our uh with our lobbyists, with Ron Book, we were very well taken care of. It was nice to see the mayor for the first time work in his element and really show leadership and a good representation for the city of Dania Beach. So it was a very positive, positive experience, a great dynamic, and I expect great things to come from it. I know that was long, but it was a lot going on, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Um Commissioner James?
Yes, I just want authorization to uh spend about three-hundred-and-thirty dollars to have a a homeowner's, um a first-time homeowner's, the courses at CW Thomas Park. I was approached by someone, wanted to put on, wanted to put on um an event of of that nature. I know that she, hm, I know she also contacted Eric Brown, her name is Kamula, Kamula Wright. Lives in the city, so I look for authorization for my funds for that.
Okay, any opposed? No, all right, all right. You are authorized.
Yeah, I'm finished, that was it, thank you.
All done? Thank you, Commissioner James. Commissioner Salvino?
Okay, um I got a few things. First of all, uh speaking of the Griffin Living Project on Griffin Road, you know, it's just, it was just very nice of topping off there. It's the first um, you know, building that's gonna be commercialized there in many, many years. Uh big corridor for our city to have that on there and that um they did a great job. And I can see that the way they're working there, it's gonna be a a nice building that's done. But it's an exciting situation for us because Griffin Road is a long time uh coming to see something happen over there. I done, I driving around a couple of places and um I sent the the city manager something, you know, some of the things that we've talked about over the years uh up in here about doing certain things. And I'm not trying to get down anybody, but I think we need to get into more of a little bit of a small strategic plan for certain things. Like the uh, we talked about having banners put up coming out of the airport. We've talked about it, talked about it, talked about it. Uh I think we should just do it. I think that they should be our city logo colors. I think that as soon as they come out of that airport, they should be up on those telephone poles. I think they should be up within six months. I think that we should be able to represent our city. I'm looking for the city council here to uh agree with that to uh to get this out there now. Because we're also talking about trying to get the airport to do stuff with us and us do that with them, can't be that much money. I I have a picture of Bayside of them just with the poles on there and it's it's exciting just to go down. It's like it livens it up and I think that's what we need at the interest of our city coming out of the airport. So I'm something that I don't know whether you have to put it out or whether we can agree to something like that. It can't be that much money, but um uh that's something that uh I think that we should do. Along with other little things that we talk about, uh we need to start having some action. So I probably will bring up at each meeting something and look for uh finalization on that and see how we're progressing. Is that okay with you, Mayor?
Yeah, I like it, it's productive and uh, you know, gets people moving.
Yeah, just bring us some back to vote on if we can do it or not or put up on a a possible, was it uh, yeah, discussion of possible action, okay?
Vice Mayor, if I may through the mayor, you all have said one hundred, you have set aside one-hundred-thousand dollars for marketing the city. You don't have to tell me to spend money, but we're, you're, the the game plan was that you were coming back for a workshop and I believe if vaccine has already set up that workshop.
Okay.
If you want me to order banners and get banners done.
Can you give us a price on the banners, just to see what they cost me? It might, I mean, they might be less than a thousand dollars.
Yeah, I I didn't want to.
I'll drop the subject, I don't want to, I don't want to debate all night. Okay, I'll bring it up on uh discussion of possible action, okay? Thank you. I don't know what, oh, that's all right, don't get so fired up, that's it. I said, okay. God, women yell at me all the time, you know that?
Well, I'm ha- I'm happy we're thinking about it, but yeah, we'll we'll approach it when the time's right.
All right, I'm not done.
It, and yeah, you can bring up um, bring up an issue every time.
Okay. Um these dividers, we asked to have them taken down, they're still up, would you like me to take them down? Are you against it? Are you, are you against to take them down? I thought we just, did we not, did we not vote on taking these down or we didn't? You don't want it down, Joyce?
We'll take them down, we'll store them, if we need to put them back up, we'll put them back up. Yeah, we'll take them down. I don't have a problem keeping.
Yeah, I can't believe this, Joyce.
Commissioner Savvy, anything else?
Two more things. I just want to let everybody know that my two granddaughters turned sixteen in the last month or two, so that's why the rest of my hair is falling out, okay? Uh now I'm gonna ask you guys for some, I'm gonna ask the city uh for its abuse of their contingency. Uh as you know, um the Prestige Club uh does uh the etiquette program. And the etiquette program uh takes children from old uh from Dania Elementary and Collins Elementary, uh brings them to uh Tropical Acres and Tropical Acres puts out, provides for them at a very low cost uh to bring them out and we teach, they teach them how to uh pull the chairs out for the ladies, how to tie their tie, how to set the table, how to do dance steps, uh you know, a lot of little things that teach young people. Uh and you know, if you've ever been to one before, probably seventy-five to eighty percent of these children that go into this uh that uh become eligible to go into this program have never even been in a restaurant before. Uh so it's pretty exciting to see their their faces, uh their excitement and stuff like that. I believe the cost for both the the schools was four thousand dollars with transportation and food. So I'm asking the city, can we do other contingencies contingency to to provide that for these two schools? It's not a private thing, it's for the school, so I feel it's fair enough to ask that. Any anybody like to comment on it?
Where's the Prestige Club?
Where is the Prestige Club? It's out in Davie, but they bring most of their stuff here to Dania, believe it or not.
Okay.
You know, I don't think they do this program in any other city but Dania Beach.
Commissioner Davis?
No, I do see the distinction um because of the fact that this was the schools. But no, when I asked for a contingency for Love Our Nation, it was just for nonprofit. But the difference I see with this is that it's directly benefiting uh Collins Elementary and it is also benefiting uh Dania Elementary. So um you know, I, that's something that I would be willing to support. I've attended, I know, I think uh Vice Mayor uh sponsored an event last year, but I think if we could do something for our schools as a commission, then that would be something that would benefit everybody. Um and and it really does make a difference for the children. The difference is uh these kids go fourth and fifth grade, so the fourth graders come back as fifth graders so they get two years of getting these skills ingrained in them and they have the memory of doing that here in our city of Dania Beach. So it's something that I'm in support of, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Okay, uh any other discussion on this or you guys like to vote on it? What's up, Vice Mayor?
So, okay, so you want out of the commission contingency? Because like last time, I think you sponsored a school.
Right, I'm asking, um because it is uh the schools in the city of Dania Beach and it's not a, it's not a nonprofit organization, I'm asking for the city's contingency to be used instead of our personal.
And how much is it?
No, we, the, the city would pay for it because it's a school, the school would not pay for it, we're given it.
How how much is it total?
Four thousand, two thousand per school.
I was, I was just asking, does the money go to the Prestige Club or the money goes directly to the restaurant?
It it goes to Prestige Club, but they diverse, diverse checks out to the schools, I mean, to the buses, the school buses, which are Broward County School Buses, and to the restaurant. They don't keep it, they have, they, it's not going in there for any, not one dollar's left to them.
It pays for the whole program and it's very, very, very well attended.
And and I have to tell you too, they, talking about attended, there is so many people that come in from the outside that volunteer that day. Uh there's probably at least fifty, sixty adults in there trying to help out to get, teach the kids how to tie ties. It's 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 an amazing program, it really is.
There's at least one adult at every table.
At least one, two, they even get them out there to dance in the floor, the guys, uh John Sax up there playing a saxophone and he's out there, the kids are dancing away. It's a lot of fun.
It's a good.
I I encourage, I encourage if we do this, I encourage all of the, everybody to come out there and anybody that's a resident contact us or the Prestige Club, come on and volunteer because it's it's a great time.
I'm fine with it.
How many students?
There's probably, there's probably two hundred, I think, wasn't it?
They get two hundred from both schools combined?
Yeah, there might be more than that, it might be like, between the two, the two schools, probably closer to three fifty, three hundred fifty kids. It's a whole, a whole big back room up there uh with probably twenty tables at least with ten or twelve kids per table.
Okay. All right, uh that's enough discussion, we call it to a vote?
You already got three.
Yeah, you got three.
All right. Okay, yeah, you go. Go ahead. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Thank you. I'm not asking for any money, I just want to make people, well, I have a few things I want to talk about, but I uh make people aware that there is a um a luncheon going on uh for Lighthouse for Students. It's coming up on Sunday, February twenty-sixth, uh Beacon of Hope Awards Luncheon. Um I have a flyer for it, I can send it around to everybody, but just to make you aware of it, um they are having a Tropical Acres, I didn't even realize that until just now. Um it's the twenty-sixth, yeah, it's a, it's at eleven-thirty. Um and uh it goes to their Lighthouse for Students program. So just to make everybody aware of it, if they're interested, it's um, reach out. Um anyway, so number one, um health fair, the uh the wellness fair was amazing. It was, I planned on just stopping by for a few minutes, I ended up spending a couple hours there. Um it was very informative, it was very well attended. Um I don't think I've ever seen our deputy uh manager as relaxed as I saw him after he had his massage. Um and I was very happy to see that. Um but uh it it was just, it was amazing, they did such a great job, you guys did a wonderful job, the whole team. So it was really, really, very, very comprehensive. So and the one thing I did talk to, I talked to our Director of Human Resources about was doing um, uh I think we're talking about maybe doing a mini one that deals with um angiograms because they had somebody there that was doing um heart-related stuff and it was, it's something that we, it's Heart Month, right? So um it's something that is is very prevalent and um if you can get checked for certain things um proactively, it's definitely a good program to have, so I definitely would encourage people to go to it. Um the motorcycle show, antique motorcycle show, do we have any idea what the attendance was on that? Because it looked like it was busier than ever in the past. Do we know?
Eighty-one hundred.
Eighty-one hundred?
Yeah, go ahead, uh go ahead, Commissioner James.
I mean, I mean, so, you know, I I talked, this, that's a great, that's a great uh point, Lori, uh Commissioner, I mean Vice Mayor. Um I was told by Tony Thackam, who is the um, one of the promoters there with with Clyde and Claire. They, somebody monitored, I think Bill uh.
There were drones too.
Huh?
There were a couple of drones.
But they monitored, they were monitoring the s- uh I guess the connection on the cell phones, I don't know how they do it. But they monitored them, they said there was over eighty-one hundred people at the show. That was monitored on phones only, I don't know, I mean, more than that. And they monitored them where they went to uh Dania Point, Fish Grill, uh Little Avoc- uh Taco Place, uh you know, just local places and and they they explored our city. But uh I didn't know they could do that with cell phones, but they, it was, it was very well attended. But it was amazing to hear that how they can track everybody here to find out where that, how they went through the city. They just didn't come here and go there, they went and spent their money throughout the city.
So to get back to my points, I'm gonna say that I do think that that is one of those, it's one of those events that is definitely an economic engine for this city. It's one of those things that brings people in from all over the country and they come and they spend their money here, they spend their time here. It's definitely, I, it was very well attended, I could just, it was amazing to see how many people were in that little area. Um but anyway, so glad to see that. Um I also attended uh the Four Chaplain Ceremony that's put on by the Ninth District of the American Legion. Um it's the first time that our mayor was able to attend as well. Um and uh it was nice that I didn't have to speak this time. Um but it's always a lovely event, it's very uh moving, it's very emotional, um but it's, it's, we've been told that it is the best one um that's done in the country. It's the 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 various legions have indicated that it's really the best ceremony in the entire country. Um and we all donated money to it this time to sponsor it, so thank you all for that because it it definitely is one of those programs that is um, it's important and it and it serves our veterans well and it um, it it does kind of put us out there uh in the spotlight because of what it, what it's about and what it, what, the people that come. I mean, people were there from all over the place, so it was good. Um let's see, the Property Force Grand Opening, very interesting. That was, it, I I think we, those of us that were there all said it kind of looked like um Wall Street um and being in the pits with the stock market and doing all that. Um and that's definitely what it looked like, but it definitely uh is a very interesting uh company with a lot of opportunity for jobs. Um so if people are interested in any. Um, so if people are interested in any type of, um, sales-type work where you don't have to do cold calling, they ought to give them a call. Uh, and see if they can, if they have any positions available, because it looked like they did. Um, the MPO State of the Region, uh, so it's also the awards, but it was the State of the Region was also, uh, a, a good event for, that both Commissioner Davis and I went to. Um, Memorial was there, we sat with the Memorial Team, um, and had some very interesting conversations with them as well about different things that are going on, uh, in, in, in the, the county. Um, but there was a, a lot of discussion about different things that are happening, there's a lot of transportation issues that are taking place in, in the county itself. Um, and people are taking notice of Broward County in general because of all the different transportation options and the changes that are being made right now, uh, to accommodate all the people that are moving here, because there's a lot of people moving here right now, just, just is what it is. Um, and then the Griffin Living Topping Out Party, the only thing I wanted to mention about that was what you had already said about the Reach Kids being there. Um, it's very interesting because the Reach Kids were, came to the, the Topping Out Party. Um, they are, not only do they come to us giving presentations, um, and seeing how this whole process works, but also going to these different events and seeing how things come to fruition, learning about the amount of money that's involved, learning about the different processes that go along with any type of development. Um, they all were learning a lot, asking really good questions still, and were, you know, really happy and excited to be there and be a part of the whole process. So that program definitely is doing what it set out to do, um, happy to see it, and Happy Valentine's Day, that's all I got.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Happy Valentine's Day. Okay, from my comments, uh, yes, the events that we had around town recently have been great. From the Motorcycle Show, the Four Chaplain Show, various openings that we've had and, uh, award ceremonies. Uh, the Port Everglades, they just unveiled their new logo, which is the Trident, so that was interesting. And, um, you can see that they're working very hard at what they're doing to be one of the top ports in the nation. And they're competing fiercely actually with Ports of Savannah and Mobile, Alabama, and it's, uh, very interesting to hear what's going on over there. Uh, touched on Tallahassee with our legislative priorities, that was our city manager's twenty-fifth legislative session and my first, and it was, uh,
I started when I was a teenager.
And it was, a, a, and Commissioner Davis's second, second time going to Tallahassee. And, uh, yeah, it was a real pleasure going up with, uh, my team up there and we definitely did a little shaking and rattling, we saw as many faces as we could, plus a couple of bonuses, so, um, it worked out very well. And, uh, I, I actually want Anna to touch a little bit on our priorities that we went over. You want to touch on it?
Oh, yes. So, first, I, I, I gotta thank Katia for, for putting such a tremendous professional brochure together and, and Candido and Director Brown and Fernando Denzer and Colin from our Public Services, um, Department. But, um, la- last year, we, we exceeded, um, four point eight million dollars. Um, and we also got our park ran and this year we put in, um, our Park Improvement Project, um, from Chester Burke Park. Um, what we do is, we, we look at what is scoring high and then we look at our parks facilities that are in need. So we put in for Chester Burke Park Improvement Project, we put in for Southwest Fifty Second Street Stormwater Improvement Project and for the Dana Beach Fire Rescue Administration and Training Facility. So basically what we do is align our needs where, where the money is flowing in, in Tallahassee. Um, as you know, um, Fire Station Number One is one of the busiest in the, in, in all of Broward County and you all have approved, um, for a multitude of new firefighters, so we're very excited for that. We're also very excited about record, uh, stormwater projects that we're doing throughout the, the city and obviously our investment in, in parks and recreation. It was extremely successful and it was really non-stop. We, we had seven meetings on, on Tuesday and we went from the last meeting with Ron Book straight to the airport and then we had a delay and we sat there on the tarmac and, um, by the time that, uh, that the flight attendant came around with those pretzels, um, we were just like basically starving to death, but, you know, we go, we get things done for our city. Um, and we couldn't have done it, um, without, there was such a dynamic between Commissioner Davis and, and the mayor and I. And we, we met with both sides of the aisle, the, the bonus is what we got to, to meet with the, the Speaker of the House, that happens to be my state rep. And he, he was telling Commissioner Davis and, and the mayor how, I, I met with Anna in her house in Westchester and she gave me her card from Dana Beach and I still had it in my wallet. So hey, whatever opportunity that we could seize while we're in Tallahassee, for the, for the sake of our city, we're gonna make it happen. So it was really fantastic. And I just want to thank the mayor and Commissioner Davis and all those that worked together on, on this, um, appropriation and legislative priorities, um, brochure. Thank you, man.
Thank you. Yeah, a lot of work went into that and it's, uh, gonna be great to see it come to fruition, just like, uh, you know, the money that we received last year. Uh, for my last item, I would like to touch on our American Legion. So, there's a program called Boy State, I don't know if you guys are familiar with it, but it's sponsored by the American Legion in the state of Florida. And what it does is they recruit our top youth in the neighborhood and they pay for them to go to Tallahassee for a week. And they go to Tallahassee and they learn about government, basically. They start on a local level and then they move to a county level, then they go to a state level and then federal. So you run for everything between, you know, mayor, commissioner to property appraiser, to Supreme Court Justice, you know, all the way up to the governor of the state of Florida. I attended this program in two thousand and six and I was a little reluctant to go, but I went and it made an impact on my life. And Boy State has done this for many years and our American Legions sponsored this for a long time as well. Uh, recently it's fallen off. I don't think either legion post has done this for several years now, it's been a very long time. So what I want to do is put forth some money in my contingency to help, uh, Commander Anderson at Post Two-O-Nine. He has an applicant ready to attend Boy State, uh, June eighteenth to the twenty-fifth. And, you know, with your permission, I would like to give seven hundred dollars of my own contingency fund towards, uh, Commander Anderson at Post Two-O-Nine to send a young man up to Tallahassee. It's like five fifty, six hundred dollars, but no, i- i- let's just start with me doing this to get it going. And then, because you could send two, two boys per post, so this is just one, one boy at Post Two-O-Nine. So I've spoken with, uh, Commander Gunny over at Post Three-O-Four and see if they're interested in getting, uh, maybe one or two applicants as well. And, you know, we can discuss that as a, as a commission, but I just want to get the ball rolling. Seven hundred dollars, you know, it's like five fifty to go, it's a hundred, a hundred fifty dollars for the, um, you know, young man to purchase something while he's up there, I know you get a little bit of free time. And it's just imperative that we support our, our posts and we support the youth and, and encourage government and, and show them that it can be interesting, can be fascinating, and hopefully we bring it back to Dana Beach, you know, so it's, it's good to see it go full circle. So I, I could assume I have, okay, perfect. I have the approval, seven hundred dollars to Post Two-O-Nine, Commander Anderson. And yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll keep you guys in the loop on when we move forward, we have till June, so we have a little bit of time. All right, that's it for my comments. Now we have appointments for the Education Advisory Board, Vice Mayor?
Just found out that I had an open appointment, uh, today, so I will have something for the next meeting.
Okay, we'll move on. Administrative report, City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, uh, city team and residents that are here and watching at home. Um, I'm, I'm very excited to in, inform our, our Commissioners and, and, and city residents that we have the full appropriation for the Southeast Drainage Project. That is a sixteen million dollar project, um, that is going to be funded by the Florida Resilient Grant. This is a, a, a grant that was established by Governor DeSantis and, um, we received three, three million four hundred and eighty thousand dollars to go towards that. We have the Broward County Certex Funds of six million three hundred and forty-six thousand and we have our city funding, our city match of six million one hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and forty. And we're, we're extremely excited about this. The project is one hundred percent funded, one hundred percent designed and we're working with Broward County, um, issuing all the necessary, uh, permits. Um, we will be looking at, where are my glasses, who am I kidding? We're going to be looking to authorize the resolution, the project bidding process, once the, um, AILA is executed, um, March through May. And then we would award by resolution the construction contract, uh, for the Phase One of the project sometime in, in August. And we're gonna make sure, um, working with, with our PIO to get the word out to all our residents, because this is something that I know that is of extreme importance and, um, it's aligned with all the rest of the priorities, um, in, in our city. But that infrastructure and that project's gonna really make a huge difference on, um, the southeast portion of, of our city. Um, I wanted to let you know that, um, our Deputy City Manager is going to be sending you all a, a very detailed email, um, tomorrow. I'm having eye surgery, so please be the acting manager. Um, we've been working with some residents that have been calling us in regards to Atlantica Project. Um, I spoke to Commissioner Davis earlier today and I know I've spoken to some of you. So there's, there's two issues here. One is on the temporary fencing for construction and the rap that goes. And, and we're also looking at the permanent fencing. Um, and this is something that was discussed and promised to us, eh, via their representative, which is Dennis Mealy. Um, so we're gonna give you the, the, the details of where we're at with everything, because I know residents reach out to you. Um, so we're looking forward to that email coming forward, eh, tomorrow. Um, again, a very successful trip in, in Tallahassee and we look forward to bringing you more information as we get it. Um, this afternoon, we met with the Dana Beach Chamber and we also met with the Hollywood Chamber. Eh, I put a committee together that included, uh, includes our CFO, our, our city attorney, our deputy city manager. And basically what we have asked of the Dana Beach Chamber and the Hollywood Chamber, hey, put a proposal together for us. Let us know what you could do for our city in regards to promoting the city, marketing the city and ensuring that we're recruiting businesses to our city, but also that our existing, uh, businesses are also thriving via your support and the resources that you can bring forward. That's whole part of what we're doing with, with the marketing, um, for the city. So we're very excited to see what, um, what we re- we return, what we get in return based on the, the guidance that we provided. Um, we're very excited that the Celeste Project is nearing completion, so within the next thirty days, we're gonna be receiving some dates working with Maxine, uh, to, to schedule a, a ribbon cutting of that project. We really believe that that project will provide an engine, um, that's very much needed, you know, on, on, on federal highway as we move to, to bring it, you know, um, to, to full fruition of what we have envisioned, uh, for the downtown core of our city. Um, our, our two million dollar investment on our pier is almost seventy-five percent complete. What a great post, um, and, and what I'm gonna do is let you know not just how many people like it and comment, but how, how far overreach we get when something is shared twenty, thirty, forty times. But we want our residents to know where their taxpayers are going and this is a fund that we have for, for the pier. And, and our proactive efforts is a difference between our peers still, still standing, um, and our fear, and our peer, you know, falling apart as it occurred in, in, in many municipalities during just the tailwind of, of a category one. So thank you to Fernando and, and Denzer and to the Public Services Team, but also to Katia to get the word out, because if we don't get the word out, nobody really knows the work that, that our mayor and Commissioner is doing together with, with our city team. Um, we have Operation Speed Control currently deployed at Southeast Fifth Avenue. Um, we've been working very proactively with, uh, with our police captain and the rest of the deputies, um, marked and unmarked vehicles. Um, so in case people think about speeding, there's a plan in place and, um, we're, we're conducting this for, for two weeks. And at the next commission meeting, um, Captain Marks is going to give you a full report of, of our findings there. I don't have to tell you the work of our speed trailers and, um, those license plate readers, they're catching the bad guys. So thank you, because that investment and your support on the budget is the difference between what we've been able to, to get off our streets in regards to criminal activity and protecting, um, our citizens. Um, as you're aware, the city clerk is, is retiring from Dana Beach. Um, personally and professionally, I will miss this individual a lot and I'll leave my comments for the, the next meeting. Um, because I'm gonna get emotional, we've worked together, going on, on four years and what an exemplary, eh, professional and, and person. And, you know, we're all getting older and I'm super happy that's gonna, that he's going to be retiring. Um, what a, what a great job that our Deputy City Clerk has, has been doing. Um, this is someone that we promoted from within, also Erica, Records Clerk, has been doing a tremendous job. Another person that we promoted from, from within. Um, uh, unfortunately, or fortunately for, for, for Erin, she's happy where she's at. We also reached out to, um, Antoine Johnson, who I affectionately call AJ, another one of our superstars. She's very happy in public services and I think Fernando and Denzer kind of breathed a sigh of relief, but that's, that's someone, we, we, we're always looking, you know, we, we, we're looking at this organization as we would a sports team, hmm, this wide receiver's leaving, who can step in? And, and Candido and I had these conversations with both AJ and, um, and this young lady to, to my right. So, when we're not satisfied with what we're getting, we go back to the table with our HR Director and our Deputy HR Director, because we want to make sure that we bring in ace. Those shoes will be very hard to fill, but we understand that people need to retire and move on. So we'll keep you updated in regards to that. On, on January the twenty-sixth, I met with, um, our former BSO Major Kevin Granville. We go back many, many, many years. Again, he retired from the city. We're gonna miss him tremendously. We've worked very, very closely with, um, Major Granville, um, to be able to bring, eh, eh, projects and programs with our youth, like our summer camp, uh, teaming up with our Parks and Recreation Department, and these are just relationships. But again, Kevin Granville is going to be retiring, we're gonna miss him and we know that we're, we're, those are gonna be very difficult shoes for Sheriff Tony to replace, but, um, as soon as we know who that individual is, we'll bring him forward and introduce him to you. And, um, we're, we're very much anticipating, um, the project at CW Thomas Park. We're able to bring it back in, in budget and, and with, with the level of professionalism and, and the vision that you all have desired for that park. So we're gonna be bringing a presentation at the next meeting and, um, you're gonna be very happy with what you see. And this concludes my report. It's a blessing to lead you and I couldn't be more happy today and every day, because we really lead this city with a lot of love and a lot of dedication, so many blessings to all of you, to our residents and to our great staff. Thank you, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Manager. Attorney Booses?
Good evening, everyone. I'll try and keep it short. I just wanted to give you an update on the annexation, um, interlocal agreement with Hollywood and the county. Um, FDOT has finally signed off on the interlocal agreement, they made some more edits, but nothing substantive. Um, so the, because they changed the title of the ordinance on the February agenda, the February twenty-eighth agenda, you will see first reading again, but it's not gonna change our timetable, because as you know, we had scheduled the second reading for March anyway. Um, so I'm in contact with Hollywood and waiting for them to tell me when their final second reading is, so we can move forward and go to the county and get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Clerk, reminders?
Upcoming City Commission Meeting, February twenty-eighth at seven PM.
You got the workshop?
That's it?
Well, there is a workshop coming up, uh, Tuesday, March seventh at five PM, however, we will be meeting prior to that.
Okay, Tuesday, March seventh. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for attending. Media, meeting adjourned. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for attending. Media, meeting adjourned.